That's 40 to 50 pages long. Okay. Here's some of the language from that document. Stakeholders have asked if using funds for activities like renovations to particular government facilities, I'll point out the handicap ramp for the commissioner's office, and equipment to facilitate and improve governmental services such as water and sewer service. I'll point out the Burtville water line extension from last week. Treasury is clarifying here that under the final rule, the cost of government typically bear are eligible uses of the funds. Government services generally include any service traditionally provided by a government. Here are some common examples, although this list is not exhaustive. Road building and maintenance and other infrastructure, that would include your broadband and water lines. Provision of police, fire, and other public safety services, including the purchase of fire trucks and police vehicles. The board recalled the decision last week on the tanker truck for the Crew Fire Department. And government services is the most flexible eligible use category under the program. Whereas written very broadly, there are some things that you just can't use the money for. You just can't use it to supplement regular routine expenditures. And that's something that, you know, I would caution you all, Ms. Tomer would caution you all, that ARPA is going to go away. So you don't want to really get into the habit of using it for just operational everyday expense programs.
I do see it says ineligible uses. Changes that reduce net tax revenue must not be offset with ARPA. So I guess that kind of falls into... And no, I wouldn't consider, I understand about ARPA going away and wasn't considering or getting into the habit of anything. It was just this, a once, one-time event, and depending on how much relief we're trying to give taxpayers, just looking at different options.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I'm doing the same thing. I'm trying to do math without a calculator, and my teachers will be really disappointed in me right now. But, so, I mean, we got, we got, okay, so, let's just say, I'm thinking out loud with everybody. So if we went on and said, we did still drop down to 3.55, $3.55, and do the 45%, basically what we doing is, that's like over $78,000 that we would have to pull out reserves to balance the budget. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Which that would increase, so you would be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood, and I didn't finish the math, but $200,000 for reserves.
And you're looking at the 355?
Yeah, I'm just thinking out loud to see if we can get the best tax relief we can without going too deep into our reserves.
Right.
But then reserves are there for reserves. That's what it's there for. But I don't, we have to be careful because it took a long time to get to those reserves.
Yeah.
Right? Anyway, I mean, I like, I really like what Mr. Costin and Ms. Tomer has put in front of us here as far as some of the things we could think about. And what they, the transfer of reserves is, you know, what they've done, anything we do lower after that, it's going to have to come out of reserves.
Yeah.
Right, Ted? I mean, pretty much, I mean, because you done sharpened your pencil as much as you can.
Well, these are just things that we've discussed.
Right, 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 right. I get it.
There's reserves. Sheriff, you know, nothing personal, one of the first things that we had to think about was the dispatchers. Yeah. Each of those dispatchers is $50,000.
That's right.
So there's, there's the dispatch positions. Now, we got the SROs through the grant, that's all set, but, you know, there's, that was certainly something that the board looked at, recognizing that there was going to be an increase in the personal property was, you know, that was an opportunity to get these dispatchers onboard. So ruling out the dispatchers, you're down to reserves, or what we have to do is go in and what I would say, make multiple little cuts. You know, things like a 5% across-the-board cut in every department's travel and training budget.
Right. Yeah, I get you.
Office supplies. That's literally where we're at the level of having to cut.
Madam Chair, what I'm hearing from constituents is this, and I got a really nice letter for one yesterday. So, Steve, whatever y'all do, we appreciate any tax relief we can, but don't shock the citizens. You know, you don't, you're right. So how do you figure, well, you know, okay, it's going to be an increase, but it ain't, you gonna sit there and have a heart attack, or, you know what I'm saying, it's just, don't shell-shock us. That's, that's pretty much, I don't know, we gotta figure it out together.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Two things. What Ted was saying, and I hope, this is just my personal feelings here, I hope nobody considers the dispatchers because during the budget process, that was one of the few times that we actually had someone step before us where we could have open banner. And I think the events following that conversation, matter of fact, days after that conversation, I think that it shows that those dispatchers are needed to be, to run as effective as possible. The other thing I want to go, Steve, you kind of lead me in something here that I, where I was going with this, and I want to ask a question. It may be a hard question, but there's no pun, no, no shots across the ballot, anything. But, and because you mentioned this too. All right, I go back to the Davenport study. When they did our study, they had seven, I'm sorry, 15.7 million. That's what they based their study off of. To this date, what have we increased to? Over 18 million, is that correct? In the general fund? The reserves?
We won't have an accurate answer to that until, that's what you're going to audit is presented, completed and presented.
Oh, all right.
That would be the fluctuation from that original figure.
Okay. All right. Is it safe to, is it safe to say that that, that there will be an increase to the 15.7?
The confusion lies between the general fund balance and the unassigned fund balance.
All right, because where I'm going with this is, and I'm asking the three senior supervisors because, you know, you guys have been here for a while. So in years past, you know, the, I mean, y'all hadn't done a lot of tax increases and stuff, and the money was, the general fund was picking up, okay? And there may have been conversations in the past about what to do with it, okay? Well, now, of course, the animal shelters come up, there's been conversations about the complex. And I'll stop right there. I think originally, by the time I got elected, the price tag on that animal shelter was somewhere around a half million, 600,000. So some figures, even the conversation went that Greensville County had spent only $400,000 to get there, it's up and going. So is it safe to say that the cost of that animal shelter has tripled? Is it also safe to say that any expectations of a courthouse complex would double or triple? From 20 to 25 to over 40 to 50 million dollars? Are we going to have that conversation? Because I'm not ready to have that conversation. I don't, I don't see that. So then that brings me back to the plan. Y'all recall, Davenport said that in three to six years, we need a 10-cent real estate tax increase to do what? Those capital projects.
That's right.
All right, so if we're...
And that was even with solar?
Right.
Was it? Or it was solar?
No, they did not include solar.
Okay. But it could, solar would help.
Right. Could help. So where I'm going with this is, when do we spend the tax money that was collected and growing? Without the tax increases, without a dedication, because as I understand it, the Davenport study, when they said three to six years, that 10-cent tax increase in three to six years was to go to support the capital outlay. And we still have a growing general fund balance. So that kind of brings me to what my personal feelings on this. All right, the study said three to six years, 10-cent tax increase, which meant no tax increase this year. Next year's an election year. That's probably why they said three to six years, because it would be after the election. So my personal feelings right now is at some point, inflation could fall out, bottom out next year. Or it could stay the same, it could drop down. Either way, I see us going into that, into those reserves at some, at some deep discount to try to help. I think now's the time. And I'll go back to what I had said earlier, and looking at these numbers, I do have a little bit of different fluctuation, but, and I agree, Kristi wants to get down to where she wants to get down, and we need to get her there. And three to four years, I think, is a reasonable timeframe for that. In order to do that, you're looking at roughly by a 10-cent decrease each year, from 60 to 50, 50 to 40, and 40 to 30, to whatever it may be. And I think that's an easier absorption for the people. My tax rate, I'll go back to some of the original figures that was presented, 325. Now, I think that's a deep cut, and we're going to go deeper in reserves. But that was another reason why I was asking about how do, should we be discussing next fiscal year's budget as well? Should we be talking about these paralleling in a deeper discussion to see how much potential we're going to be going into the reserves at some point? Do we go deeper now, where these people are really going to feel it? Or is this, and I'm going to tell y'all, we go deep into the reserves next year, you know what the folks are going to say? Y'all did this because it was election year. You tried to act like I saved you. So that's the reason why I said we need to be fair and transparent and do this as best parallel. And I know it's hard to project, this budget, current budget, is even more difficult to project the next one. But that's just some thoughts on mine.
So when the reserves are gone, they're gone.
I understand, Mr. Vaughn, but what I'm saying is, we haven't used reserves, and they're steadily gaining ground, and this is without the tax increase for the capital projects. So when are we going to use those reserves that the citizens have put in there? I mean, it's not our money, it's theirs.
Oh, I know that, John. You know I know that.
Yes, sir.
But we have to keep a reserve.
I understand.
You, he said, so he kind of, he did ask about some of the board members, it's been a while, and from the Davenport report, what I understood, and Katie, you were correct me wrong, we have, we, over the years, we have underestimated the revenue and we overestimated the expenditures. And then by doing that, boom, 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 that's kind of, that's kind of what happened.
And keep in mind that the citizens have gotten a break over the years.
Do you have any idea?
To a tune of a million, over a million dollars.
Any idea of fiscal year to fiscal year, what the increase in the reserves, like last fiscal, in one fiscal year?
Off the top of my head, what I can offer is maybe what you were trying to get to, is if I had to give you a close estimate on what your unassigned balance would be, it would probably be somewhere around that. Don't take that to the bank, but that's somewhere...
Unassigned.
Unassigned.
See, that's the difference, John.
Right. But the assigned, and the...
Your total general fund balance includes your landfill requirement. It includes your, currently includes your ARPA money. So when I say unassigned, I mean what is unobligated allocated, sitting there ready for us to utilize, should we.
And out of that 15.7 that Davenport talked about, how much of that was unassigned?
I don't think they had the landfill post closure estimate factored in that. So it would have been just shot at 10, roughly.
So essentially, they're saying there was 5.7 million available? Are we expecting that figure to increase?
They were including the landfill, I mean, the LRA sale fund, which is just over $5 million. I think they had that included as a possible fund source.
They did, they did. Yeah, they did.
And I go back...
And that's why that figure was what it was.
Right, and I go back, because I'm sure y'all probably read it too, there's been some reports that were setting over, on over $20 million. So that's...
Is the people reporting that, are they professional auditors, or are they just opinionated?
I have no idea.
Okay. I always, excuse me, I always get very leery of people who think they know.
Are there any, are we looking at any potential events this year that would drive revenue? This like, if a sale of any assets, anything that we know that or expect may occur this year that would generate revenue that we didn't factor into the budget, or could occur?
I wouldn't know from economic development side of things, but the only potential assets would be your freehold property, and that's, we worked that so that, you know, that's LRA separate from...
Does that include the bowling alley?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that solar's still hovering that too, Lynn. But that wouldn't be this year, we probably, even if we approved everything right this moment, it'd be a while for that to even come. Boy, this is fun. I like this kind of stuff.
Right. Well, and I guess, and y'all forgive me with my ignorance at times, but I guess the point I'm trying to get to is, when we talk about reserves, how much is in the reserves and are we expecting an increase?
I think you could expect an increase based on the treasurer's investments and the current interest rates, okay? But if you're pulling out, obviously, it's going to go down because now your principal's been lowered. And again, to what Ms. Tomer said, that absolute final number, end-of-year five, you know, in the fiscal year '22 number, when you get that, it's going to be different because of the market rates and everything, and how much you decide to go in on the reserves to deal with this situation that you've been handed.
According to the budget assumption, it was trending that, yes, there would be a slight gain for the county's general fund. But this changes that, because I feel like what you would potentially have to dip into total is going to exceed any gain from '22.
So, so let me, let me talk for a full second, and agree with you, John, a little bit. So that's why I say, this don't shock, but let's say we went 200,000 in the reserves, but then at the end of the year, we still gained, well, man, we'd have made a math boo-boo somewhere.
Right.
I know what you're getting at, because we never have done that. We've always gained, even though we thought we won't gain it.
But we've never had a 9.1 inflation either.
Good point. That's right, I mean, but we went through a rough time in 2006.
Yeah.
Recession.
I'm just, I'm just saying, it's, at some point, I feel, even if the bottom falls out, I was told that there was a, and here again, I didn't read it, it's just that there's automobiles sitting in fields, over 1,000 acres, ready to flood the market. What's going to happen? It's going to bottom out. And it's the potential to do that next year. So if that happens, are we going to raise the rate on these people to balance this thing again, or are we going to the general fund? That's what I'm saying, somewhere or another along the line, I think the, well, I keep saying the general fund, I'm sorry, the reserves are going to take a serious hit in order to make this work out where you avoid the heart attacks and the sticker shock. That's why I say, right now, they're feeling, because you, they're not going to get this money back. Whatever they pay to ship, they're not going to get it back. And they're going to feel this. That's the reason why, you know, I'm good with going down from 60 to 50, but the tax rate, I would say my, my personal wiggle room on that would be 335. 335, 50%. I think that gets Kristi a third of the, I see, I know.
You went all the way to the bottom of the charge, didn't you?
Well, and keep in mind, y'all, I think y'all, y'all may know this, when I see something like this, this is working for the people and not working for government. Any other way, to me, appears to be working for government, and I'm just, I don't like working for government. But I understand, this is tough. This is tough. I've never been in this situation before. I know y'all may have had some situations similar to this, but this is tough.
So just for the folks that are following along at home, the 335 tax rate with a personal property tax relief of 50% will create a deficit of $1,23,003.52.
Mm-hmm. Where would you make that up at?
Right.
The reserves. People have paid for it. People have paid their taxes for it. It's sitting in the reserves, and like I said, and I'll go back to that, to the Davenport study, nobody on this board that I recall has said, that's what we're going to do.
Well, so, so I feel like you made a contradictory statement. So you said, then you said, look, well, we need to talk about next year, look, we got to think about next year. So what you going to do next year? Another million?
If, I mean, the whole thing is, what does it take to protect the citizens?
Well, first of all, we are trying to protect citizens, but these are vehicles they bought.
I get that.
Okay, I mean...
We're not responsible for the increased valuation. We can't take total responsibility for that, of the values of the vehicles. I see less than the impact of the mistake made by the county, but, in working with that, but I don't, I don't know that we can protect the citizens from the way, you know, how the economy is...
It's going to be that way going for a while, just not just this year. So I don't see, I just don't see a million and some dollars every year coming from the reserves.
So if we, if we did that, if we went, as Mr. Rourke is suggesting, and we've got this 1,23,000 deficit, what, how much do we have to additional? So we budgeted, we're going to hit the reserves 325 just to balance the budget, is that correct? 325,000?
325 used for capital, not operational.
Not operational for capital.
The one penny over that amount, you're putting general fund reserves into operations.
So it was going to take an additional 125, 192 at 365, 45. So at 335, 50, additional hit to reserves is what?
What'd you do, you went to 345, 45? So you're hitting it, John, in the way?
Well, I was just seeing the, going to the extreme that he suggested, what would be the total hit to reserves.
If I'm looking at, if I hit the buttons right, 384,187.50.
You might say 400,000. No. So that's, so basically, okay, so that's 400,000 at, what'd you do? That was 3.45, right?
3.35 at 50%, so that's that last, very last column.
Okay.
Results in a deficit of 1,23,003.52. And what you're looking at doing is the reductions that staff has laid out, only transferring from reserves in addition to the 125, 192,05, another 384,000.
Oh, oh, I got you. I was wrong, okay. I'm with you now.
So that would be...
Hey, Dana, what?
But Steve, to your point about the contradictions, what I'm saying is, you, essentially, we would have to make a, kind of make a decision on, do we parallel? Are we going with that Davenport study, or are we going to look at a 10-cent real estate tax increase in three to six years? You see what I'm saying?
I got you. Either we're going to stay on track with Davenport, or we're going to get off track.
That's right. And if we're going to get off track, guess what? Why are you holding on to that money? Now, you see where I'm going? Why are we going to hold on to their money at a time when they most desperately need it?
But I believe the Davenport study, the various options that they gave was to also leverage some of that money for securing bonds, which the county has no bond rating.
Right.
And do some long-term investment and build up a bond rating. And that's candidly because the county has not done anything, that's how the money has built up.
That's right.
The county has not done anything, so the money has built up.
That's another reason to parallel. Where are we going to go with this in the near future?
I still have expectations.
We have talked about capital improvement. We're talking, if you look at the offices up here at the courthouse, we need, we need to build the building. We really do.
I mean, I agree, we need a sheriff's department.
Not only the sheriff's department, the county administrator's office. Have you been in there?
The radio system?
Yeah.
I could go all over this complex.
Yeah, I mean...
The treasurer shouldn't be in the basement.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
Right. But what I'm saying is, when it was initially presented and the complex was talked about, you're talking 20 to 25 million dollars. Now you're talking about double to triple. Then how come the animal shelter tripled?
But what we're talking about tonight is the personal property tax, and we're getting off of...
I'm just, I'm just trying to parallel with that.
We're getting off of, of track of what we're talking about.
Right. But I'm trying to parallel with the near future. You know, we've talked about these things, nobody's made a solid commitment to any of it. And I feel like if we're not going to parallel, make a solid commitment to any of those capital projects, which means a commitment to a 10-cent real estate tax in the next three to six years, then what are we going to do, holding on to the citizens' money right now, when they desperately need it? And I understand it appears to be getting off track, but I think it all rolls into gether.
But if we spend all of it, then what are we going...
I ain't saying spend all of it.
You'll have to raise taxes, and then you're really going to...
So, because we do, we need to, so we got to figure out how many, and I get it, I hear what you're saying, but I still think we got to build some buildings or do something, because if we don't, the place is going to fall down on us.
Well, I don't disagree about that.
Right. But, you know, what if, what if right now, we had already started that, and we had a million-dollar payment this year? Whoa. I doubt if we reducing anything, because we couldn't.
Well, your situation would obviously be different.
Right.
Right.
Basically, the difference is, I think, some of us, excuse me, Madam Chair, some of us want to take the piggy bank and break and get the money, you know, start using money. I want to shake it a little bit and get the money out. I don't know, I'm trying to figure out what's a good balance, and I hear you, John, I mean, we got people, but they, but they bought the vehicles too now.
I mean, I understand that.
Right. You understand, you know, if somebody's got two vehicles and they only should have, I mean, we are, every, how many people use a spy scout a vehicle, and they got a vehicle, you know?
We're going to double-edged sword.
I know, I know, man.
It's two years.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think next year will be just as bad.
Yep. Whether the inflation goes up or down, it's going to be just as bad.
Maybe I'm, Madam Chair, if I've been, maybe I'm a little off, off topic as well, but I think I indicated at the last board meeting that the architect or the shelter is going to come in. And the chair and I have attended several of the CARES meetings, and the cost of that construction has gone up. It hasn't tripled. It's getting close to doubling. It started out as about 200 square foot, it's getting close to 350 a square foot. And one of the strategies has been to go ahead and proceed, or that's in consideration, that'll be for the board to decide in September. One of the strategies is to go ahead and greenlight construction plans, development of construction plans, but hold off bidding, you know, with the hope that the supply chain gets better, the economy gets better, and the construction can go forward. But I, I've, I've never known the animal shelter cost to be as low as 400,000.
Yeah, that, that was discussed in '19 in a board meeting in here that I was attending, before my time.
Right.
I don't know that they really had any basis for that as far as, I don't think they had plans, or, I don't know if it was just an amount, maybe, that you...
We went, we went to, it was in Emporia, right? Went to Emporia, and that was the...
What they did.
That's what the animal...
Control officer.
Yeah, control officer, that's what he thought it was. You know, we didn't, we didn't, we weren't with the county administrator, whatever it costs, you know, but...
Being, being from that area at one time, and overseeing animal control at one time down there, that was a, there was a shared facility between the county and the, in the city.
Right.
And I may be mistaken about this, but I thought... And I may be mistaken about this, but I thought the county went its separate way and the city did some rehab. Now, maybe the rehab on that shelter cost 400,000.
Yeah, I can't remember. But, but it was, I mean, it was a nice-looking shelter, but what they did was, it looked nice at front, but the, the back wasn't all that nice. Does that make sense? You know?
Yeah.
But better than one we got now.
Yes, a whole lot better. Yes.
So I think when you've got even, you know, top economists disagreeing about what's gonna happen with this economy and we don't know, I think it was a good question that you asked, what about next year if it's gotten worse or we could just keep going into general, into the reserves and keep on doing this?
You can't, you can't keep doing it, no, ma'am. I believe a lot of this is political. I don't get into politics, but I believe come midterm.
Oh, you, you all into politics, bro.
Well, I believe come, come the midterms, you're gonna start seeing things turn for votes. And that's unfortunate because.
Yeah, you know.
They're the ones that pay for it.
I got people telling me they ain't gonna vote for me and I don't blame them. But I'm gonna make a dead-on decision and I'm gonna try to do what I think is best for the county. And so I'm not there to make, you know, I don't like you anymore, Steve. Well, then, good luck to you. Because, I mean, we gotta make decisions. I mean, they put me here for a reason and not for, if everybody likes me, then I ain't doing my job. That's right.
Aw, Steve.
Oh, my Lord Jesus. I shouldn't have said that. But I hear about it a lot. They got a lot of them's gonna run up, you know, I hear that, but it's, it's fine. Go for it. But tonight, we're gonna make a decision.
I think we need to go with the 365 PPTR, 45%.
Say it gets slow up, bro.
And.
What is that?
Go with the recommendations made for the proposals expended to us. That's what I'd like to see. If you go down to 335, you're talking about a million dollars that we'll have to make up.
The people already made it up. We don't have to make up any, they've already put it in there.
Let's clarify that. We all put it in there.
Well, yeah.
Okay. We get, a lot of times people say, "Hey, Steve, we gotta pay taxes." I said, "I'm with you, man. I pay."
I got a big chunk to pay. Miles close to three grand.
I don't wanna pay more either.
All of us represent the same number of people. And I'm, I'm hearing the same thing that you hear. But at some point, we have to make a decision.
So you're going with the first one? Is that what he just did?
Yes.
365, 45.
Because, I mean, it's already been broken down as to how we can get to the 638,816,05. And, I mean, if we go to a million, we're gonna have to.
You're gonna have to cut, cut, cut.
I was more, I'm kinda stuck in between right and left. So I was more of the, the 355, 45, and I, and, and just going back into reserves a little deeper. And I think I figured mathematically it was.
That's 716 dollars.
16,000.
300.
I mean, 716,000.
That's the third column. The, the third column would be a tax rate of 355, which means you'd be dropping your tax rate. In a PPTR of 45, your resulting deficit is 716,906.62. That's approximately 80, all of these seem to vary by about 80,000. That's about 80,000 difference between the 638, 816,05. I can give you the exact figure in a moment. And just from discussions, Mr. Bowen, you suggested just adding that to the reserves.
Yeah, and what I thought it was something like, instead of 125,000, I don't, 152. It was like, you gotta add 78,000 or something to it.
Two, three.
And I tell you why.
Probably 200,000.
Why he's figuring that out. I'm telling you why what I'm thinking, John and, and the board members, so if we go to that first one, Sherman, and we don't dip in reserves, we gonna hear about that too now.
Either way you go, you're gonna.
Well, you don't know that. You don't know that. It's a guess-a-game.
We will be dipping into reserves for 125.
125.
We think we are. We don't, that's at 98%. We don't know that. That's what, I'm just telling you, it's a move, am I right or wrong? That's an estimate. But we, we, we thought, well, last year we were dipping in reserves many years and we never dipped in reserves. We gained. That's what I'm telling you. You see what I'm thinking? If, if we go that, and, 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 and I hope Katie's wrong, I hope, that's a terrible thing to say, isn't it? But I hope we didn't go into reserves that much. That's what you, that's how, that's the positive thinking that you're going. But in this case, after John gave his point, if, if we don't, they're gonna say, "Well, gee, thanks, you did it again."
It's, it's additional, it's an additional dip into reserves of 78,84.57.
So you take 78, 84 and add it to 125, 92,05.
203, 192.
200,000.
Okay. I can live with that. I can live with that.
And watch, if we go in reserves, 300, whoo. But if we don't, you know, but anyway, that's why I'm going, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm born by what you, some of it is political.
It is.
Right. I get it. I know, I'm not, I'm not gonna.
All right. If I can piggyback off what you were just saying, all right, the kind of the shock you were feeling, like 200,000, but if we go into 300,000, whoa. But now imagine this, sitting out there and you go, "Yeah, you went into a 300,000 when you're sitting on this many million." I mean, you follow what I'm saying?
Right. But lot, look, what a lot of things we don't know. The sheriff thinks he's gonna get dispatchers. And to, to get recruitment, suppose he gotta go a little bit higher. Suppose he's gotta do, see, all that stuff, and I don't wanna cut that out. I don't, I'm not, I don't think none of us wanna cut dispatchers. That's not in our intention, whatever. But he don't really know what it's gonna take to, he's estimating that.
That's right.
You know, and then that's, that's salaries that go on and on, and it's not a one-time expenditure.
Well, I'd like to make the observation, much of the budget, every line I, is an estimate. Oh, yeah. It might be based on past experience.
That's all it is.
But you have a situation where, well, I'll give you the example of, when I got here, I proceeded to try to hire for Mr. Zodi's position. I had to do two rounds. That meant for more months than was built into the budget, there was a vacancy which retained money that, it was money we didn't have to spend because we, we didn't have the position filled. So these things happen. Mister, if the sheriff, you know, loses a couple more dispatchers, he's gonna have to be looking at overtime.
Well, yeah, and then, and then you have tailings, like if people leave, that's vacant positions, that's not filled, so you're actually having revenue.
You see it, you see it as a savings unless, like a dispatcher position, you gotta have it so people are picking up overtime.
So the.
I'm sorry, it's just, it's very situation.
I get you.
The capital improvement plan you had given us, that was a, what was, how do we budget for that? I know the 325.
And that is the contribution from fiscal year 23 to the capital improvements plan. Those two projects.
The three.
And you will just continue, ideally, you would continue to budget that way a little bit each year and knock out or knock down what the cost.
So what was the carryover from prior fiscal year for capital improvements? You said that, did you say something about a carryover?
No. You said something about carryover for the board's discretion.
So this 325, is that directed specifically at capital improvement, a certain, a specific?
Two projects on the capital improvements plan just now.
Which are?
The radio system, the executive radio system.
And yet we've got ARPA money possibly going to that? No.
Not at this moment, no.
What was, okay, no.
And our system upgrade, our software system upgrade, for the commission of the treasurer and county admin.
And there was some money tucked up, tucked in planning for the animal shelter on the planning side.
We've only got 325, so it'll go to all of that?
We, we have, we do have carryover funds going to the animal shelter from '22 into '24.
That's in, that's reflected in the capital, in the capital budget.
So when you're looking at, what, the last time we budgeted for animal shelter, 1.7, I think, or do we move that up to 1, are we still at 1.7?
From the Davenport where.
When you're looking at multiple millions of dollars, how do we ever accomplish anything at 325,000 a year? What do we do? Are we end up leveraging, borrowing money to do these capital improvements or what?
That's where the reserves could come in, that you could put the reserves into the project, or you could do, leverage your reserves for borrowing, get a good interest rate because of the amount of reserves you have, or some combination of the two.
Or grant match.
Or, well, that's where I was getting ready to go next, or the grants. You're, you're aware that we've, we're working with Representative Spanberger on the radio project specifically, through her community grant project, and Mr. Zodi's working with Pet, Petco, order grant, working on a grant for Petco for the animal shelter.
Well, that's one of those cases where I believe on the last board meeting, apparently they just started, you know, saying, "Don't request the funds." You know, they'll review the project and if they decide to award you, award the county money, they'll just award whatever. So there's no expect, you know, there's no expectation.
So I'm trying to wrap my head around the, the position that we're in now. What's the difference if we, do we come out even if we just say, "Well, take out this 325 budgeted for capital improvements and dip into it to, to," because coming out for operating, I get it, which is not, but at the point that we want to make a significant investment in a capital initiative, then we either decide, "Well, we're gonna make a big transfer of reserve funds," or leverage or whatever. So what if, I mean, what would be the, the drawback of not having this 325 budgeted for capital?
So you're asking.
Well, for too many years, we have not been putting money in capital improvement.
Correct.
And consequently, the complex was not well-kept like it should have been.
Right.
And if we're going to improve, had we done this over the years, then we would have had enough money in there to have taken care of the animal control as well as the courthouse complex.
Right.
So I would like to see that capital improvement stay.
The idea was, Madam Chair, there were so many things that had been neglected that needed to be done, that in order to at least start somewhere.
Gotcha. Okay. Although knowing that to actually accomplish something, we may have to make bigger withdrawals from the general fund or borrow or whatever.
Whatever. Well, a combination of both.
Right.
So, so also, Madam Chair, to go with John's point, on the future, I mean, that's why, him and I are looking at two different, through two, two different lenses. So we got to, and this is a question, so we got the reassessment coming up. When things, this is, I don't know how to ask a question, when things are, when the economy is in a downslide, does that affect the reassessments?
Those in the number?
Value of property, the value of property. I mean, what the end result is, what you do with tax return after that.
The, see, that, see, we're not even talking about, you know, the, the, the real estate tax. See, that's still hovering, you, you with me? We, we over here fooling with this, but we still got that big boy over here.
But when you use the word reassessment, then you brought in, uh, real estate.
Real estate.
Reassessments occur based on property values as of what date?
Well, when they come out and do the reassessment, they, I must, probably the year that they start, and then when they, because they go out and they look at different properties in different counties that are similar to ours.
Generally, I've always understood that the assessment for taxation purposes has always been lower than market value.
Yes.
So if the, but, so I think the question is, in looking at the assessment value for taxation purposes during the reassessment, is that where they factor in and try to level set with the market value? You're nodding your head up and down.
Yeah.
Okay. We may not have video, so I wanted to make sure.
So, so, so what Katie's saying, doesn't matter, they, if it, let's say acre of land was $2,000 and it went down to 1,500, I can adjust the rate to make it up or stick with it.
Ideally, you're, you're not trying to gain a profit off the reassessment.
Right, that's right. Yeah. See, that's still like that too.
Yeah.
In a, in a normal world, a normal, you know, after reassessment, generally, the rates are reset lower because the property has gone up in value. So you actually have a drop in real, in the real estate rate after a reassessment to try to keep you about where you were in, in prior years.
Well, Madam Chair, if I can fall off of what you were talking about, the 325 and capital outlay, all right, here's the thing. What do y'all do with capital outlay? Because when the next budget comes around, you can move it anywhere you want to, right?
Well, it's not capital outlay, it's capital improvement.
Capital improvement. And if it's not used at the end of the budget?
Capital improvements at this point are obligated to a specific project.
It carries over.
There you go, okay.
It carries over. So you're building up, you're building up a fund.
That's right.
So if you got 300, next year will be 600 and if you don't spend any, huh?
Right.
Okay. That's a good question.
Let, let me emphasize, I stood down there and I said, "This is a rudimentary capital improvement," because it did not bring in the, any of the emergency services and it did not bring in the school. And that's gonna be the, you know, Davenport, part, part two.
That's right.
That's where, that's cool thing.
So if we go to public hearing August 10th, is that right? So tonight is a work session, but do we have to, we need to vote on budget amendments to present at the public, prior to the public hearing?
Just a consensus, I believe.
Just what?
Yeah, we need a consensus that you wanna go with.
Which one we go advertise?
Column A or column, column, well, one or three.
So we need to reach that consensus tonight?
Yes. Because we need to, we need, we've crafted the ad, but we need to get some details into the ad. That has to be submitted tomorrow.
So Steve, you were recommending 355, 45?
Yes, and my biggest, and I'll just say, the reason being is, is it's going into reserves, it's not going too much, but I do not want to see the reserves increase next year. I, I want them to see, that's crazy. Why did I say that? I would love to see them increase, but it's, the political part of it, if it does increase.
We didn't give enough tax.
We didn't give enough tax relief. That's why, and that's why I chose it. I just think 125,000, and I, I see why Mr. Costin did it and Katie, I get it, but that's, that's mighty close.
Yeah, it could be because I did my job really well too. You know, I'm probably about to split it.
You're right, Katie. I should, I could need a patch of girl. Yeah, I, I agree with you. I just, I'm, I'm just looking at the political part too, and, and giving a little more tax relief.
And we don't, we're not able to project what an increase in, what we're anticipating is an increase in reserves for this specific year.
No, because they gotta finish our project on field work and get enough.
When would they be finished at any type of estimation? Because I know we got a September.
It's supposed to be presented in December, by, before January 1st.
So that's way, I mean, the September 1 date is out of the question with that.
Madam Chair, I'm glad, I don't know whose idea was, to do the, for me, it's Ms. Hudson or y'all, whoever, y'all had discussion, but I really loved the idea of the 50% to 45 because you found in that mid, midsection there. Let's, let's just be honest about this thing, and that's what we hung up on. This year is gonna be a learning curve for this board. And I mean, it's, it's a learning curve. And, um, and then, you know, maybe, that's, I don't want to wreck, I don't, I don't want to get off the curve and wreck, but I get what you're trying to say, too, John, because the money is their money, I understand that.
And Steve, what, what you're saying here is, so essentially, in two years, at, at, going from essentially the 60 to the 45, so the following year, at, at that type of a leap, again, drop again, she would be, at, at the, at the range she needs to be at the 32%.
Well, I suppose we didn't go in, in reserves as much, then maybe we could cut a little bit more next year. You, you with me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
See, I didn't know if you want, if, I, I guess, one of my questions was, do we want to try to target to help her
get, get to her point in three years or two? Because then, that answers the question, do you want 50 or 45? You follow what I'm saying?
Oh, 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 right, right, yeah, okay, I'm with you.
Yeah, so, so I guess, if you decide whether, do we want to give the constituents the opportunity to step this thing down in three years, then 50 is the way to go. If you want to try to get her to the 32, then two years, 45 would be the way to go this year.
You, you're looking at the future the whole time.
Yeah.
From 375 down to 365. Steve, you're dropping it, uh, it, we started out at 375, am I right?
I know, I know what you're saying, then we went to 365, and now I'm going to 355. I know what you're saying, Sharon, which I never thought I'd be doing that, but I'm trying to figure out a balance.
Uh, Penitent Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
If I could address one, one descriptor of Mr. Mr. Bowens, it is a learning experience for the board, it's a learning experience for the staff, and it's a learning experience for the commissioner of revenue. This really started with my asking one simple question, one a talking point. Why do we have, you know, what, what is the purpose behind this recognized historic, you know, additional tax relief, and how much? And that led to code research and conversations with the commissioner, and it's been, it's been, I'll say, it's been embarrassing, it's been fraught with, you know, turmoil, but if I had to do it again, I'd ask the same question again.
Well, that's the only way to get to it, ask the hard questions, I mean, I agree, and I'm glad, finally, finally, offices work together up here, I love that.
Me, too.
I love that.
So, but, and, 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 and let's say this, I mean, I mean, let's say it, how broke, how, how broke was it? Because we still gain revenue, we've been, this county's been blessed, I mean, it really has. Okay, well, you can say what you want, you know, you know, I, I mean, okay, so things happen, and now we're, we're in a learning curve, we're trying to figure, right, but we get, you know, the, the reserves of that, even though we had a.
Yeah, we're not, we're doing the repairs, outpace the relief you were giving.
Well, yeah, 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 I keep, I keep wanting revenue, you going back to the expenditures, I understand.
Mr. Bowen, to Madam, to Madam Chairman's point about, you know, was it wrong to give more relief? It wasn't wrong, but the process wasn't right.
Okay.
We're setting the process, we're getting the, getting the process right.
So would you, I've calculated, but would you calculate, we know 365 and 45, we dip into reserves, 125, 192?
Oh, five, yes, ma'am.
355, 45, we dip in 203, 192, let's say.
Okay.
Then what would we be dipping in at 355 and 50?
355 and 50? Okay.
And that, while they're figuring that out, that's what you mean by two years or three years.
That's right.
Right, yeah. As you can see, we're hitting it. I started here, you start here.
Just, just food for thought.
We all hungry.
I didn't bring them in. It is a double-edged sword, because you need to keep into perspective the fact that you want to do what's best. But if you, if you are considering the fact that you may have to do the same thing next year, well, at some point, you're going to have to make it up if we start doing the things in the county that people want us to do. If we start improving the county the way we're trying to do.
Right, right.
It's, it's, it's gonna, at one point, you're gonna have to. You're gonna have to acknowledge what you're doing with the, the future of, we're gonna have to find it sooner rather than later.
To Ms. Tomer's part, uh, point, there's, uh, the rails being repaired in front of the county administration office today, and getting done for free.
That's right.
Madam Chairman, I came up with 362,146.85.
Say that number again, Ted, I'm sorry.
362,146.85, and that is basically going, using the 355 and 50% over the 716,962. So if you do, let me see if I can run this through.
How'd you do that?
I just ran, I just took the, um, the difference between those two, and added it back into the 203.
So under 355 and 50, the deficit increases from the first column at 236,955, right?
Yeah, but what I was trying to do is figure out also, once you have that difference, adding that into what you want to take out, the figure that you might want to take out from reserves.
Right. Are you adding the two, the, the increased deficit to this 125 to come up with what comes out of reserves?
The difference between these two, I'm adding that into, the difference between 875, 77, 85, and 716, 962, I'm taking that difference, and then I'm adding it to the 203, 276, 62.
Okay. So we're looking at choices of 125, 203, 362?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
We're dipping into reserves, and what can we live with?
Where did you cut? I mean, where would, where would you start cutting to?
Well, it comes out of reserves.
It'd be reserves.
Do it all from the general, I mean, from the reserve?
Well, it would be these, the cuts as they're set forth, and then just more out of the reserves on the bottom line.
First, the first five items on that lower right-hand block?
Okay.
The 15, the 50, the 5, the 300, the 143, 624.
Then the rest.
The rest, whatever, whatever you come up with comes out of reserves, if that's what the board wants to do.
Good googlemo. Why are you, look like you so relaxed?
I am?
I'll tell the thing.
I'm good, bro. The lower y'all go, the better I'm feeling.
Christie, how much of an impact, as we go, what we're looking at, how much of an impact is that actually going to make on a taxpayer's, tax bill? I know that can vary dramatically, but.
See what you did.
All right. I did do a little bit careful, because I was wondering, yes, so I have a vehicle that's valued at 40,875.
Okay.
If we go with 355 at 45%, the taxes would be 1,131,56, which is $267 more than last year. But if we go with the 365 with the 45, it's 1,163, 44.
So we're talking a difference in the tax bill of only 30-some dollars?
From those two, yeah.
Wow, okay.
It's not that big of an impact, is it?
It really isn't.
And that's a $40,000 vehicle.
It is.
Oh, but you, but you got to add that 30 to the 267. You got to add that $30 difference to the 267, right?
No, 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 this, I just put that out there, because that's what it would have been more than last year.
Oh, and, and that's what I'm saying.
But the value went up.
The value went, the value went up $267 at 355, 45. It went up almost to, with the additional $30 at 365, 45, almost $300.
Yeah, if you break it down that way, yeah.
Okay.
At 50% for the 355, the taxes would be $1,096.
Versus what, what was that for?
The 45 at 1,131.
So John, I'm not sure I followed you, if, under the 355 on this $40,000 vehicle, at 355, 45, Christie, it's 1,131 is the tax bill on that?
Yes.
All right. At 365, 45, the tax bill on the same vehicle?
Is 1,163, 44.
All right.
That much of a difference.
So that's, um, $32 difference. So if 1131 is an increase from last year in a tax bill of 267, 1163 is an increase of 299, right?
Correct.
1163, 44, yes.
The impact, considering the difference in what we are looking at taking out of the general fund, the impact on the actual individual tax bill is not great, we're talking $30, right?
If we go with the 355, you're saying?
Yeah.
No, that 30, but that $30 difference is between that right there, what it is, but the minimum increase is $267, that's the increase from the inflation. Right.
The tax bill, which I, and that's under the 355, 45, and it's be 290-some dollars increase, the 1163, that's what I just said, yes.
Yeah.
And that increase, Ms. Hudson, is driven by the value of the prop, of the value of the property?
That's correct.
Which is controlled by?
Christie, do you have one that's, like, something that's worth, like, 20,000 or a, a lower amount?
And this is applying this relief rate to just the first 20,000 of that 40,000 vehicle?
Right, that's correct. They were 20,000, do you want to use 365 or 355?
365.
So Helen, what you doing, you're trying to? I'm sorry.
So what, 45, yes.
Like 469, it would be 496, 40, is what they would pay for a $20,000 vehicle.
And that's under 365, 45?
45, mhm.
Madam Chair, Ms. Hudson, if I may, um, the first figure you were giving us, the 355 and the 365, a 45% rate at the $40,000 value, their tax bill last year was roughly $864.
Um, yes, that's correct.
So it goes from 864 to 1,031?
Exactly.
Okay. I just want to make sure I.
Yeah, I should have probably put that down.
Yeah, and then from 365, um, pretty much you get only 830, so it was like 300, okay, yeah, so. A $300 increase it did right there. The silence is definite.
You know, Madam Chair, we're probably not going to agree 100%, we're just not.
I know.
And, and it, here's what the wonderful savior is on this thing, is that we just, we're putting something out to, to, I don't know if it's going to be a savior or not, but we're going to put out something, and then we got to hear what the public got to say. So, you know, so if the public comes and says, you should go dip in the reserves, but we got to listen what they got to say, you know? It's just, it's just what it is, so.
That's fair, yeah.
Right, I mean.
So are we going to reach a consensus tonight?
Well, we got to have something to advertise on here.
We're gonna have to.
Yes, we do.
Ms. Simmons, what, what are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are the same, 365, 45%, but y'all want to go lower to 355, 45%. That's the one Steve picked.
Yeah, and, and I was just going deeper into the reserves.
That's where we're looking, about 203,000 into reserves.
203,000, that's right.
Which is a lot of money.
He said you could live with that, Mr. Bowen?
I can live with, um, 355, 45, but our first thing was 365, 45, but.
Come on, just, let's, let's be a mediator, Mr. Bowen.
I can live with 355, 45. See, we started out at, we started out at 375, and now we're down to 355, or 365.
Okay.
Steve, is that where you, you still there?
I'm still there, I'm all right with that, I'm, I'm.
I can, if I'm like Mr. Bowen, I can live with that.
It's really more than I thought I was going to do, but anyway. And like I said, I'll tell you again, that my mind thought is that, um, just make sure we dip in those reserves.
Well, we won't know until public hearing, how people feel, anyway.
Yeah, it'll be snow on the ground, I must figure it out.
Can I ask a complete off-the-wall question here?
Tell him no.
After we have the actual number, can we revisit this in December? After we have the audit numbers and know what, what the reserves are going to look like?
You've already closed the books, though, I mean, set the tax bills.
I can't change them.
Okay, all right, that's right, the September 1 date, my, my apologies, that's right.
Well, I'm glad you asked that question, believe it or not, Madam Chair, and I, and I, we're going to have to vote on this thing. But I want to ask Christie why we're sitting in this work session. Do, in your opinion, to send out tax bills twice a year instead of once a year is, not my, somehow non-verbal communication.
I think we both talked that.
I mean, I, I got people asking me about that. Oh, yeah, because this is double the work, which, you know, but my, I guess my opinion when I was asking is, does that help, in the other counties that you have conversation with, do they feel like it helps the, uh?
It does. Everybody that I've talked to that does it, they like it. Commissioners.
Lundenberg and Dan Whitty, I know.
Yeah, I know, Lundenberg just did it, and that's why I was just, um, but once you do it, it can't go back, you know, it's like, it's, because then you'll, I mean, you can, but I mean, it'll just be deducted tax.
Right, well, and it would help out the, the taxpayer, too, because it's worth the, you know, thing that would be due June and December.
And it don't hit them all at Christmas.
It doesn't hit them all.
But I heard you say you would need an extra person?
I do, I would.
And the cop board doesn't pay for all of the positions that the county has now in the constitutional offices, and Mr. Rourke and I.
And the cop board doesn't pay for all of the positions that the county has now in the constitutional offices, and Mr. Rourke and I had a discussion at VACO about that, yeah.
Yeah, we put it forward to the VACO committee to ask for additional funding, so. Can, can, I hope this don't put you on the spot, but can I ask you this question? Do you prefer the PPR at forty-five or fifty?
Forty-five.
So Mr. Rourke, you're the one left to say, can you live with three fifty-five, forty-five?
Madam Chair, I'll be fair with you guys, and I'll say this. Y'all have a consensus, let's move forward. Because I would not, until I hear from the citizens, I would not, and I don't think any of you have said that you're going to vote for this.
Right, we just need a consensus to take it to public hearing.
Yes, by, by all means, let's, let's hear what the public has to say.
If we do this, then we'll have a public hearing, and then we'll hear from the citizens.
That's what I'm saying, y'all have a consensus.
And they will tell us.
Let's, let's, let's hear what they got to say.
All right, is that where we are?
Yeah. Boarding, staff here is three fifty-five
Forty-five.
and forty-five percent P, uh, PPTR, recognizing reductions on the board, Board of Supervisors Health Insurance Contribution, the Board of Supervisors Discretionary Fund, budgeted for reassessment, capital for the Public Safety Radio System, reduction in the school, local appropriation for, to schools, and then transfer of reserves in the amount of
Like two hundred and three.
two hundred and three thousand, two seventy-six, sixty-two, okay, and we'll probably advertise these with some round numbers, if that's acceptable to the board.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Appreciate that.
All right, the next item on the agenda, discussion on use of ARPA funds. Mr. Hudson, do you want to introduce us to this?
Excuse me, I'll, I'll introduce it. This, this document you have before you this evening is similar to what was in your board packet last week. But it's basically a summation of where we are with ARPA funds, round one. One million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents was received in round one. The board committed one million, three hundred thousand to broadband. I want to have Mr. Zodi step up here and show you a map. That, uh, that's your cue, Greg, to step up here and show us the map. And, uh, sometimes, sometimes good help is hard to find, but anyway, uh, you can see you can see the, uh, the areas
Know which direction.
And the north, uh, north east and southwest that are targeted in the first round of great, of, of VADI money. Greg and I had the opportunity to go to, um, out to Martinsville and meet with the executive director of West Piedmont Plain District Commission. That's the regional entity that we've partnered with along with River Street, the provider to start this, to start this project, and the board signed off on that, that contract, but not going to believe, on April or May. Greg, you want to talk a little bit about the meeting, and then I'll, I'll pick up with round two?
Certainly, um, we, we had a very general discussion, just to get all of us on the same page, so it's a very rudimentary meeting. Excuse me, the, the second round, well, the, that's the round, it's the twenty twenty-three VADI round, which expires on August, we have to have our grant applicant, our applications submitted by August twenty-fifth. So we'll have to decide whether or not we can do a resolution or have a group letter from Western Piedmont Planning District Commission, which is kind of a core organization that's going to help us. Um, what we did, we talked about that right now, we have this gap along the four, the four sixty corridor. And a lot of that, we're hoping to focus the twenty twenty-three funds awarded to fill this gap in here. Because now the twenty, twenty twenty-three VADI round, we're looking at one twenty-five over thirty, no, over twenty, uh, mill, millabytes per second download and then upload, upload would be twenty, and downloading would be one hundred and twenty-five. In the twenty twenty-two round, um, that we were awarded the grant, that was only for, I think it was twenty-five over three, so it's twenty-five megabytes per second downloading. And that's typically sentry link, I have sentry link, and then three megabytes per second uploading, which is really slow, really slow. And so we, I have contacts with West Piedmont, I'll work with, work correctly with, and I'll also be working with Lon Welchel with River Street moving forward along this, and I did ask them several things about this map.
You, you can put it down, I think they've got, they've got an idea.
Well, I'm going to explain, this part is, this is the SpaceX, and I believe this is covered in the twenty twenty-two round. And you'll notice it says RDF, RDOF, and what that stands for is Regional Development Altimoney Fund, that River Street and West Piedmont. They receive those funds, and it's, I think close for this particular round, it's going to be approximately fifty million dollars, not just for us, this will be a mix of federal funds, just from a large pool of funding. So we're hoping we can fill in the gaps, and just where there's no coverage or very limited coverage, and try to make the county offer it, but what's the term, is it a completely connected or something along those lines? So that is going to be, from my, my perspective, that is going to be one of the best things we can do to the economic environment. Because I've, I've sat through seminars where people have said, or the consultants have said, they look for colleges, access to highways, and internet. We're going to have fiber. And, you know, that, aside from infrastructure, like site development, getting sites ready for development, which I'd rather see, this is part of that. This will get us one step closer to having a strong economic development program, in my opinion, make us more attractive to businesses. So I'm kind of with that for me, development, add all the schools, because I know in the rural areas, it's going to be hard, it's hard for kids if they don't have wireless or a good connection at home. Every other job I've had, you know, you had students sitting outside the schools in the park, you know, trying to do their homework and all that. But it's really just, we're going to meet, um, next Wednesday, we're going to have a teleconference with Mr. Welchel and Mike Armbruster with Western Piedmont PDC, and go over some of these items, so we, because they're going to work on the grant for us, on our behalf, and I'll be the, I guess, intermediary between the four projects and West Piedmont.
So, if I may, a couple of things I'd like to throw in, uh, in addition to Mr. Zodi's comments. One is to remind the board, this is a three-year project, it's going to take three years, and this is for the twenty twenty-two, or the twenty, actually, it was twenty twenty-one, um, VADI grant. The good news is, they're not starting at one point in sweeping left to right or right to left, they're going to do little pockets. So when this grant starts, when they actually start construction, there will be a construction start in Notaway. Okay, so that's, those, those are those two, two points I wanted to, to let you know, this, this is going to get started. Greg, are we missing anything else before we move on to the other topics?
Um, you just touched on the sales of construction, having each member's locality. We're going to begin as a group, having a monthly meeting, so I'll put that in my monthly reports to the board.
And that'll be both from a operational standpoint and a financial standpoint.
And let's see, we, I believe that's really, that's, we've covered everything, Mr. Costa.
Okay. Does the board have any questions on just, just broadband? Okay, so to move on then, that's kind of where we are on the, on the round one. And again, depending on what they've referred to as penetration rate, um, if they hit forty percent or more penetration rate in an area that they're, that they're putting the service in, we won't have to make up the difference. But I would still recommend holding back that three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eighteen. The board did commit the one point three million, but the contract came in at one point one million. But I would still hold that, that money back in the event that we have to chip in to get to that forty percent. We have to make up the difference if they don't have the forty percent penetration. So then, the round two grant, uh, of ARPA, the ARPA funds came in, this is the exact same amount, uh, one, that, one million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars, uh, dollars and fifty, fifty cents. We have reduced it already down to two, uh, by two hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred dollars, and that was for the tanker, uh, uh, apparatus, the fire apparatus for crew, ten thousand for the Burtville waterline extension, um, for, uh, that would actually serve the animal shelter site, and twenty thousand, five hundred, uh, which is estimated for handicap ramp for the Commissioner of Revenue's office, leaving you one hun, one point, uh, one, one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. Now, here are some of the, the topics or some of the projects that people have thrown out. Two hundred thousand for rehab of the Public Safety Training Center, this is generally known as the Fire Building, outside of Blackstone. It has gone through several assessments by the Virginia Department of Fire Programs, and it is, uh, probably very close to being taken off the list of usable facilities. A hundred thousand dollars for a handicap ramp to, to the backside of the, it's identified here as the EOC, uh, but that's also the same room that we have been using for Planning Commission meetings and Board of Zoning Appeals meetings. We've got a couple unknown opportunities on terms of cost, the Cox Road Waterline, as well as the second round of VADI, uh, grants for broadband. And we have received a request for two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars from steps for the shelter in Farmville, but Mr. Rourke and I were talking before the meeting, he may have a, a update on that, that particular project. I've asked the staff for any other ideas that they may be aware of, and nothing has come forward. Certainly, if the board has suggestions or ideas that we can add to this list. I will note the timelines, we have to commit all the funds by the end of twenty twenty-four, and you see the completion date for the broadband round one, and then we have to have all the funds completed, all the projects done, that the funds are going to by the end of twenty twenty-six. I'd be happy to take any questions you have this time, but Madam Chairman, Mr. Mr. Rourke may want to update you on the, the steps.
I'd like to put five hundred thousand dollars in there for Cox Road Extension.
Should we wait for Blackstone to do, because they, they are filing for grant applications before we commit, and it
We don't have to spend it, we, we'll have it designated for the, in case they need it.
Who owns the Public Safety Training Center?
The land is owned by the town of Blackstone. And the, uh, group that I think was formerly known as the Fire Association, uh, owns the building. We get into that issue of
How can you have different ownership of a bu, building from who owns the land?
Based, based on the, um, based on the, whatever the agreement was at the time, that's an issue where
Legally, you can do that, right?
I don't, I don't think you can either, you know, I think, I think the, um, my, my conversations with Mr. Van Orbeek have been, yep, we own the land, the association, and this was an association that just wasn't a Notaway association, although it's pretty much become that. But it was multiple jurisdictions around here, uh, the, uh, I think Dinwiddie was a part, Amelia was a part, and over time, they just kind of went and did their own thing. But that is a, a, a request that has come up from the working group, the Public Safety Working Group, that's the fire chiefs and representatives from the sheriff's office and the, uh, and the EMS unit.
Mr. Costa, to, to follow up on that, at one time, were they generating revenue off that building by letting other departments use it?
Yes, sir, they were.
Okay.
Uh, how, how, how much that's happening now, I don't know.
I don't think they have charged other departments when they have that, the training, their duty job.
Yeah, I, I, I thought I was told it.
I don't think they charge other
They may not be doing it now, I believe at one time they were doing it.
At one time they were doing, and I believe that they have, um, come to some agreement that if it's, if it's within Notaway, they don't charge. But if it's outside
Exactly, yeah.
Dinwiddie, Amelia, whoever, yeah.
Is, is, is that their intent, do we know if that's their intent?
The, the intent, the desire would be to make it not just a fire training facility, but also a law enforcement training facility, where they could go in and learn how to, um, hostage, re, retract, uh, extraction, uh, the rescue squad could use it for, um, confined space training and, and extraction. It's, that's why it's kind of, kind of being, uh, relabeled or presented as a public safety training center, as opposed to just a fire, you know, a, a fire, a burn, a what's I think historically would be known as a burn building.
This, this
I don't ever recall them charging Burkeville or Crew
No.
to use that facility.
You're right, no, it was outside entities, outside.
I can see outside, yeah.
Yeah, and let me ask you this, Mr. Costa, do we know that if we, does it need this money there, that this, having this, uh, facility back up to par, that it was, would it be saving their funding from having to go out and train at additional areas?
I believe it would.
Because then it's worth it, without a question. If it's, if it's helping them cut back on expenses, then I'd be all for that.
We can get you that information.
Can we put on the list, can we, um, y'all, we got to get that voter registration office back up here to the courthouse. We need to get that, we need to get that thing out to school. The voter registration office, we need to get it out to school, we need to get it up here to courthouse.
I agree with you.
I've been saying that for years.
And we're talking about capital improvement.
Right, so I don't, but I don't know, maybe, you know, we talked about getting some type of prefabbed construction house or something, can we put that on the list, Mr. Costa?
Sure, we put it on the list.
Don't mean it's going to happen.
Well, I've got, I've got to check eligibility.
Right, I understand that, right.
Capital improvements for something that might be an office trailer may not quite fit in there, but we'll look, we'll certainly look.
Our intent is to try to get it centralized in the center of the, of the of the county.
So we're showing here, summer of twenty twenty-five completion of broadband, broadband round one, is that correct?
Yes.
So
That's based on the contract.
When would we have to commit funding for round two of broadband? How long do we have before we have to commit the funding?
Well, first, first, we need to get the engineering costs, and I, you know, we'll be discussing that next week at our meeting, but I probably had to make that commitment when we make application, is that correct, Mr. Costa?
You know, if we make, if we make application, now, we've given them notice that we were going, that we were interested in making application, but all that did was to preserve that option for us, it doesn't mean we have to make the, the application.
So if we don't designate these ARPA funds for that, where is that money going to come from? We're looking probably at a similar amount of another one point three million for broadband?
I would anticipate so, yeah.
And where would we, we'd be pulling that either financing or pulling it from reserves?
Probably pulling it from reserves as far as the, the money that's available right now. I believe we could leverage off some tobacco identification money, or is it too many, too many state pots, too many federal pots?
I, I need to, quite honestly, Madam Chair, I need to research that.
And that would be something we could do, ta, take up in the topic of the meeting
Right.
next, next week, as funding options.
So are we all feeling pretty committed to completing this broadband project?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, 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 definitely.
I was, I was going to mention that to you, Madam Chair, as well, because I had one other question here, and then I was going to comment on that, if I could, the EOC, those handicap ramps, it, that's a requirement, ain't it?
Okay, it's a, it's a requirement when you do a substantial renovation on a building, or change the use of the building. It's technically still an office building. So it hasn't been changed.
All right, if we do a ribbon cutting over there, we better have a ramp on it, anyway.
Oh, yeah, sure, right, right.
It's still a conference room. It's still would be used as a conference room, still be used as a meeting room, still be used as an office complex, so it's not a change of use. But if you change the use, or I think it's change, a, a project more than fifty percent of the value of the, of the, of the, of the building, then you have to comply. But as I, I said, with the situation with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, it's not necessarily, you know, it's, it's still an office, it's been an office for a long time, but it's the right thing to do.
Right, just want to be in compliance.
Yeah.
Correct. And then as far as the ARPA funds go, that was one of my concerns because of the razzing costs, where in the first round, you were suggesting keeping that three hundred thousand dollars set aside for penetration. I think we may ought to be looking at some of this as well.
Well, that's a possibility, yes, absolutely. I mean, when we get down into, you know, twenty-twenty-five, and that money's still sitting there, we got to come up with something to move it.
Right. I'll tell you, we're going to hear it. My neighbor got it and I don't.
The guy's thought it somewhere, but that's the way it is.
That's right.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, you are.
So what are our questions for next week? When Mr. Zodi and I meet with Mr. Welchel, is price and territory, what's, what's, what's getting covered? But is the board fairly agreeable that the next target area ought to be the corridor?
Yeah, because that's your economic development corridor.
And that's pretty much in line with what the discussions are at the cop, with, relative to the comprehensive plan.
I'm tired, so I forgot to mention that. That's absolutely verbally wanted to see growth.
Right.
Commercial, I mean, commercial and industrial.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I would be fine with that.
And, you know, what I'm saying is that we, we can't ever underestimate the power of telecommunability, because it's a very affordable place to live. And if we can attract more people to buy homes here and telecommute to Richmond or what have you, I mean, you know, you look.
Unless you're working for the state.
Yeah, that's so cool.
Well, again, staff's not asking for commitments or any of this this evening, they just wanted you all.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, Mr. Rourke, you'd ask kind of for an update of where we were with ARPA funds, what we were going to do. These are some of the things that we have in mind. We have a new item tonight, the voter registration building. But yes, I can certainly, um, you know, we can, you continue to update you on this, on this.
Well, um, we, just food for thought here, guys. I, I don't want to say nothing, I'm supposed to say, but we may have, I'm going to put it like, we may have some assets that we need to protect. Is protecting and moving those assets going to cost more than the repair to the roof?
And we haven't priced that out yet. We've not priced that out.
Because Steve was, Steve mentioned that. I didn't know if you forgot it or not, so.
Yeah.
What you thought I was saying, how much is it going to cost to pack it up, how much is it going to cost to store it, how long we going to store it, and is it easier just to make that repair with, with these funds?
And that was an item that I had on the list, but took it off.
Right.
Obvious reasons.
Right, right.
And Buddy's communicating with the emergency services group, because there may be, you know, we got this, we gave, sent in money for the tanker, but is it something else like that that we don't know about? You know, you, you just, you see what I'm saying, you know, and I'm, I'm hoping that they, you know, I know there's.